Let's call at 6:30 and I'll call our workshop session to order. Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Here.
Councilmember Valento?
Here.
Councilmember Erickson? Councilmember Roberts?
Here.
And Mayor Bean?
Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, we have an agenda this evening. Just note, we are in a workshop session tonight. This is intended to be a working session of council. Anything that we discuss this evening that requires official action will come back before council in a regularly scheduled council meeting for official vote. And so this is, again, just a working but important session of council. On our first item on our agenda this evening is open forum. Open forum is any interested parties opportunity to speak to council on any topic of your choosing. And wondering if we have anybody for open forum tonight?
There's none.
No, okay. Very good. We are going to kick off tonight's workshop and kind of a good introduction to the year with departmental overviews. And Patrick, do you want to get us started?
Yes, I will. Madam Mayor and City Council, tonight we will be presenting just some updated information and kind of a look, see what's going to happen in 2023. We will be playing little musical chairs here, so each department will be giving their own presentation. But we will have each department do it on their own, so if there's questions or they can ad lib if they need to add more information. So Karen, if you can connect me here, we can get started.
Is there just a function key, Dan? Is it?
Well, I can do it.
Shut the ball.
There you go.
Or does it extend? Well, now I really wrecked it.
So you're gonna have to...
What in the world? Oh my gosh, I can't do it.
Now you're back.
So sorry.
Duplicate.
Duplicate.
Thank you. Good stumbling of a start here. Okay, so. Just, we did cover this in the training session we had late last year. I just thought it would be good to repeat that the city of Forest Lake is a statutory city. Basically, bottom line, what that means is we have to follow most of the statutes. We don't have a lot of power to do some of our own stuff that some of the larger cities have. So we really, the format of our government is based on what's in the statutes. We do get to do some licensing, we get to do a few things, but the majority of the power rests in the Minnesota state statutes. I also thought we'd go over the strategic plan. We haven't talked about that in a little bit. I'll go over each of the objectives that we had in the strategic plan. If you all recall, a few years back, we held a strategic planning session. We had, actually, I thought a really good turnout from the citizens, a lot of participation. And we came up with four objectives from the strategic plan. The first one is that the city of Forest Lake is obligated to operate in a financially prudent and responsible manner while maintaining the basic infrastructure and facilities for the community. Develop a sound financial plan and infrastructure plan is a major component of impacting the quality of life and economic development. Well, we did come up with a 10-year plan to address some of the needs that we talked about. We presented that to the city council last year, but we do need to continue to update that and finalize that policy. We still have the park plan that is in draft form that we will need to bring to council this year and then integrate that into the 10-year plan. The important thing, however, is that I would hope and will present to the council a policy document that adopts a 10-year plan. When I say adopt the 10-year plan, and not to get too far into this, I mean that the concept that we have a 10-year plan. It's not always going to be able to be followed in the five years or six years or seven years or eight years, but we have to lay out some kind of structure and some kind of roadmap to how we do and pay for what we have to do, whether it's infrastructure buildings and so forth. So it's my hope that later in the year, once we integrate the park plan into this, that the council adopts a policy that says, yes, we will adopt annually and update annually a 10-year plan. That'll be work on our staff side, but it'll also be a council work to try to put those priorities in place and know where we're going. Four years ago, it was clear that the city wished to find a way to afford its infrastructure to pay for what it is. While the 10-year plan that we presented isn't a 100% solution, at least it's a start to where we can go. We've got a long way to getting to where we need to afford our infrastructure and keeping it up to date, but at least the 10-year plan starts to give us some of those catapults. Object two, provide a clearer vision for the city of Forest Lake's parks, trails, recreation system and facilities. As I just mentioned, we have a park plan that is in draft form. We've gotten back. We will review that with the soon-to-be-new park committee and then also the council. Then we should hopefully will have the council and the committee adopt that. And then, like I said earlier, we will put that in the 10-year plan so we have even a better picture of where we're going. So I think we've got good progress on the first two. The 10-year plan was a big one. The park plan is also a large one. If you recall, this objective number two is one of the largest responses that we got from this community. The community really was interested in keeping our parks, expanding our parks, keeping our trails good, expanding our trails. That's what they see as a big part of the community and were interested in making sure that is well-kept. Proactively engaged in diversified community outreach, social media and communications. We have done more on the social media websites these days. We're much better than we were when we first came out with this for most of those platforms. But then also, you will see this next couple of weeks, a rollout of the webpage. And we continue to internally discuss how we can get better with communications and how we can get better with reaching out to the public. So we're making progress on that as well, I think. Pretty good progress, actually. And finally, to improve the environment for new and existing business and slash development by leveraging the city of Forest Lake's high quality of life, local advantage, natural resources and strong schools. As I said, the natural resources and advantages, the parks, the trails, the lake and so forth, is a big portion of not only business development, but also residential development. People are looking for those amenities. We have addressed this in some ways by creating the downtown plan that was adopted. We also have recently hired a community development director and are starting to improve our community development function, which is long overdue. We've adopted recently a business assistance policy for downtown. We'll need to look at more policies regarding that, whether it's TIF or other things that relate to business. Also, when we had COVID, we provided relief on the business side for grants. The other thing that we have to be aware of, and it's not on this slide, is the residential development. What does that look like? What amenities are going to be in there? We should make sure that it reflects our community values and what is possible, whether that's trails, whether that's sidewalks, and all those other things that'll attract new development here. We were fortunate in the past couple, about the past year, to have a lot of interest in the community. Unfortunately, some of the economic factors with interest rates and things have slowed that down tremendously. I mean, as we reported to council earlier last year, we had five or six active development proposals. Right now, we don't have those. So we're hoping that this year, once inflation and everything kind of settles down, that this will come back. We are the natural next growth area for the metro area, so we're hoping to see that in the future here. Administration, I'll go through this quickly. What the responsibilities besides everything that you want us to do. Direct administration of the city and provide, as provided by the council, so you give us the direction and what we should be doing. State and federal also has some direction of what we're supposed to do, whether it's for personnel issues or police issues, things like that. Coordinate with the city council, administering the city affairs. We provide policy recommendation. We participate and are active in local improvements in the city projects with engineering and the city council. We're responsible for the financial statements and the financial overview of the city. Of course, we have to attend and participate in council meetings, coordinate city programs as authorized by the council, supervise and have day-to-day oversight of all the activities that city departments, heads and administrative staff, make recommendations to the council for the employment of city staff, work in cooperation with our city attorney and our city engineer, consult with elected and appointed officials. And what I mean by that is the state and federal officials, that I think we've been actually pretty successful doing. Stay informed of any changes in state and federal accounting programs that might affect the city. Again, we have some good examples of that recently on the state level. And then negotiate and delegate, and negotiate the terms of employment for the unions and any employees that we employ. I mentioned some of this already. The year ahead, what we look at is the 10-year plan. We have presented that to the city council, as I indicated. We need to refine and include priorities from the parks' master plans. We need to update that presentation to the city council, and then we'll need to adopt it as a policy. One of the major building issues or capital issues is the public works building. We have a plan where we need to build a new public works building. I believe that's a necessity. If you look at our current arrangements, it's crowded. Storage is at six or seven different places. Makes for inefficiencies and people getting to their jobs, getting the equipment. I think that's an important thing for, not only for the operation, but the future of the city. The city's going to be larger. We're going to need a facility that can handle all its needs. It doesn't only include those streets people, but it's also the water, all the water equipment, the sewer people, or whatever equipment they need for the sewer. So I think there's a definite need to look at building another, a new public works building in the future. In the 2023 budget, there is funding for a needs assessment. That would be hire somebody to say, okay, what do we need to have in a new building? What's that look like? How big is it going to be? What kind of configuration, some concept designs? And then what are we going to do with the old space? So we're hoping to get that ready to go early this current year and by the end of the year, have at least an idea of what that looks like. We have scheduled in the 10-year plan a construction of a new building in fiscal year '26 and '27. I mean, that'll take more than one year to construct this, construct the building. Roads, we need to maintain and repair the city roads. Even though we've done a 10-year plan, like I mentioned before, it's really not exactly what we need to have. It's a blueprint. It's a start. It's a direction. We always struggle and will continue to struggle with funding and how we repair these roads. That's a major challenge to staff and the council on how far can we go, what kind of monies do we really need to do this? And then try to balance that off with raising taxes or other sources of income. Buildings, we, the council passed a proposal that we would, we don't have that many buildings, but we're looking at this building and what the future repairs may need for here. This building is about six years old. We don't need to wait or cannot, should not wait until it's 20 years old to start to figure out what the repairs are going to be and what the replacement costs of equipment and things like that are going to be. So we're going to have that looked at. We own the south garage. We're, right now, the ambulance provider houses their equipment, but also half of that is storage for public works. So we have to look and see what shape that's in. And finally, the senior center, we have to look at that. And I've already mentioned the possibility of construction of a public works building. Staffing. In the 10-year plan, we asked the department heads to take a look at what's 10-year staffing looks like, based on the growth of what we anticipate to the community. But before we got to that, we, fortunately now, and the council has been very supportive, have hiring new senior staff for the finance department and community development. If you recall, when we first, four or five years ago here now, we did not have a finance department. Basically, we contracted out finance to a private accounting firm, which employed somebody in who was on site one day a week, which made it a little difficult to coordinate financing. Also, we did not have a community development director. The community development function was centered on one person who was supposed to be the community development director, the planner and all the other things, and the enforcer of ordinances and things like that. So we appreciate that the council has had the wisdom to support us and two new staff positions for finance and for community development. I think it's an improvement and really back to where you were, where you're about 2014, where you should have stayed. We also have new support staff in finance. We had a turnover of finance staff, so we have a new accounting manager position. We have two clerks that are new, so we're fairly new and green in the finance department, as well as we're new and green in the community development department. Both the senior staff in finance and community development are only here a year or less than a year, really. And same thing with the finance and community development staff are here less than a year, probably closer to six months in finance. So we have a lot of catching up, a lot of training, a lot of systems to go through. Some of that also included bringing the water billing system back in-house so that it would operate better. Again, we contracted that out and it just wasn't a success. It was, it just was poor. So. In the 10-year plan, as I said, we asked the department heads to give us their opinions on what they need. We've added a few police officers lately, so we've done that. The council's added two police officers for one position, I recall, at this point. But in the future, we're looking at community service officers. As our calls for service increase, it makes some sense to hire civilian officers to take those low-level calls from the community, whether it's the dogs or whether it's, you know, somebody running off and not paying for their gas or things like that, that they can take a report and do some traffic. So it will aid the police department in shifting the resources more to the patrolmen to do the more serious type of work. Fire, we have no second-in-command in fire. We have no third command in fire. We have no fourth command in fire. We need somebody, we need somebody there. Al has been working diligently and is now in the process of writing a grant to the federal, for the federal government that may fund two new positions for a three-year period so that we don't have to just all of a sudden hit the budget hard with one or two positions in fire. If we get the grant, we can phase that over three years and slowly increase the budget so we can afford to have those without really killing the tax bills. Planning and zoning, the council was gracious enough to approve an administrative assistant for 2023. Hopefully, that will work. Future, we should be looking at a zoning tech to do some, more zoning work, some more enforcement, and then an engineering tech to do some of the things that we're looking at as far as the way new houses are built and what the grades are and things like that, but also code enforcement. Again, this is, like a record, we get a lot of calls on code enforcement, whether it's beat-up cars, whether it's neighbor disputes, whatever it is, we have a lot of code enforcement. We do not proactively go out for, looking for code enforcements. That's not what we would be doing here. We have enough calls to support a person that can do code enforcement every day of the week, so. We should be looking a little bit closer at what our needs in economic development are. We should be looking at the possibility of having an HR professional. We do not have that. We kind of split up those duties between the accounting manager, myself, and the assistant city administrator. Again, I mentioned we need to do a better job with website and communications, so somewhere there's a position or a part of a position that needs to be addressed there. And with finance, again, as we get bigger and we have more development and we have everything, probably in the long term, an accountant might be in the future of the finance department. Again, these aren't all next-year things. These are kind of looking at the 10-year plan and giving you a kind of a guess, a good guess on where we should be looking at for the next 10 years. As far as the EDA goes, we need to bring up, bring to, up to speed the new EDA members and the composition of the EDA. We're going to have a lot of new members. We have two people that have left, so that is going to be important. The EDA needs to address where the downtown plan is going to go. It's a $35 million-plus-dollar plan. We have no funding for. That is, should be a major point of discussion with not only the EDA, but the council, is what are we willing to do? Are we willing to do this? What kind of sources of revenue are we talking about? Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of options with sources of revenue. The state doesn't allow us to do a lot. It's either property tax, I've mentioned, income, sorry, a sales tax and so forth, but those are the things we need to talk about. And then we need to continue to review EDA policies, such as TIF funding and all of that. So that's what we're looking to do. It'll take a while for EDA and the new members to kind of get up to speed, but we anticipate that we should be able to do that this year. Not to be redundant, the park master plan, again, the draft is completed. It's under review. We'll bring that forward to the committee and to the council. Again, one of the things, again, it sounds like a broken record, it lacks a stable funding mechanism. Yes, we have park impact fees or whatever we call them. Impact fees, I call them, sorry, old term, but park dedication fees, thank you. But that won't be enough in the long run. It's not enough, and dedication fees can only be used for development. It can't be used for long-term maintenance. It's a developmental fee. So even as we look at bringing in more subdivisions and required park land, which we should because once the land's gone, it doesn't come back, so it's difficult to buy and more expensive to buy park land. So we need to do that. But we really don't have a stable source of funding there either. For the first time, two years ago, we gave, started funding the parks' dedication through the property tax levy, started with $50,000. Last year, we did a swap and gave $450,000 to them, and then this year, we went back to the $50,000. The 10-year plan calls a $50,000 contribution from the tax levy, but to be honest, it still won't be enough. We still have to take a second look, and we have to look at, again, the park plan and see what that calls for. One of the building permitting process improvement, I mentioned this to the council a few weeks back, that we are looking to get the building permitting online. Right now, contractors still have to walk in the door and do their permitting. By the end of this year, we should have that online and ready to go, that almost anybody should be able to get online and do their permits, whether it's a household who wants to put a fence up or whether it's a contractor. We should be able to take most of those things online. We should also be able to take online payments for those things, which we do not do now. Everything's in-person and by check. That was great 20 years ago, but, you know, people don't want to operate that way. Contractors don't want to operate that. Families don't operate that way. We need to change that. When we purchased the enterprise software, we had that in mind, that software should be able to handle all of that. And we need, we don't have to look out for something or something else to buy or something else to do. What we do have to do is kind of re-implement our building department software. It's really just kind of a change because we designed it to be one way, but it needs to go a different way. So there's going to be some implementation issues there, but nothing that we shouldn't be able to handle. Washington County partnership. We've been working for the last two years with Washington County. They would like to build and operate an environmental center and yard waste drop-off at the site that the city owns across 61 from the airport. We have had great conversations with them. The nice thing about that piece of property, you can't build anything there for the most part anyways because it's the runway, the flight zone for the runway. So, but it can have a small building or we can make the small building fit there and have the yard waste do something else. So we're not going to be taking land off the tax laws or anything. This is also the same site that we planned to put the public works facility. And so it will be, hopefully, if we can do that as well, it'll be a nice public campus, a land that's already owned by either the county or the city, and across the street from the county service center. So it kind of centralizes those kinds of services. It's a really good idea. The county is really excited about our partnership here. We hope that now that the county has gotten it approved at their level in many ways, that we can start to bring that before the council and have an agreement on what part of the land they have, what part of the land we have. They'll want to own their piece of property, and I would argue that we don't charge them a lot of money for that, you know, a dollar or $10, something like that, just because of the partnership. This will also allow us in the future to close our own yard waste center. What you do is swap a yard waste center that's open a couple of days a week, depending on what season is, to a full-time yard waste center. And we save some money. So it's a great deal for the city. We're looking forward to getting that further down the road. I don't anticipate that opening this year, but I anticipate building or some kind of agreement to start this year, I would hope, dependent on the county. Everyone knows Highway 97. We continue with planning meetings with MDOT for the reconstruction of Highway 97 from our west border to Highway 61. That's scheduled for 2025 construction. County Highway 33 and 32, again, planning meetings with Washington County for the reconstruction of those in '26 for Highway 32 and '24 for, and '33. So that's coming quickly, but we continue to have to meet with them and make sure the specifications and everything works out, so. Finally, the state legislature. We have a lot of things all of a sudden that we're looking at. We talked to the last meeting about the possibility of legalization of marijuana, the THC. We did a moratorium on the sale of that. There's a lot of way to go. The league is very involved with that. We expect some kind of a bonding bill this year, whether, we don't know exactly at this point how that's going to happen. For you, for most of you recall the bonding, but what bonding bill does is a local municipalities request from the state certain projects, whether it's wastewater, whether it's parks, whether it's buildings. And the state comes up with a package, you know. They get 1,000, 1,000 different projects and they pick X number until they reach whatever the number that is that they can bond for. Three years ago, two years ago, we participated in the bonding bill. We received $1.7 million for the rehab of half of our lift stations. So we will again look at including more things in the bonding bill. We don't know if they're going to take our last submission, which they never voted on, which was the regional stormwater plan for JD4, where we were going to build a regional stormwater facility on the south end of town so that we didn't have to have a whole bunch of ponds, every little development that's going to come down there. You know, right now, they have to build a pond, so we have a pond for this subdivision, another pond for that subdivision. Instead, it makes more sense to build a large pond. In addition, we anticipated that if we get that kind of money and buy land for such a facility, that it also could become a regional park because you'll need a lot of land to surround it. It also could be a space where we could bury a future water treatment, not plant, but storage underground there. And also, we've had talks with the school about partnering with them. They possibly need a new school, depending on the demographics, that that might also be a place. So we're looking, what you're seeing is more and more partnerships that we're trying to So we're looking, what you're seeing is more and more partnerships that we're trying to develop, whether it's with the county, whether it's with the state, whether it's with the schools. That's really the future of what we should be looking at is partnerships with the local municipalities or districts.
Is, is there a, and I, I think I heard you say, there's not a decision on if there, what the process will be for bonding, if it's application?
We don't know. We may have to resubmit. They may take submissions and ask for other submissions. We're waiting to see. It's early in this, in the session, so we should know in the next few months. Typically, that's, that process is concluded sometime in May or June, so they'll have the list. The governor has submitted his list last year, the last time, but who knows if that's going to change, so that's kind of up in the air. We should be looking, and we'll, we'll talk about this when we talk about the legislative agenda, so I won't do too much here more. But we should look at requesting local infra, more funding for local infrastructure. We should look for more funding for our local government aid formula, whether it's for streets or whether it's for just general fund. Two years ago, we lost $90,000 in our general fund revenues because of the formula that state used. We got too big and it excluded us from that, that funding source. So we should be looking at that. Administrative citation authority, one of the things we definitely struggle with when we talk about enforcement is we cannot write somebody a ticket and just have them come and pay the ticket. So you have a bunch of crappy cars in your lawn, on your lawn, we'll write you a ticket for them, $100, $200, three, whatever it is. Instead, we have to write them a citation for a misdemeanor that has to go to court. And going to court for those things, we are never very successful. The judges aren't very interested. So we hope that we can start the process with the league and possibly our representatives to allow the statutory cities like ourselves, and we're, again, back to being a statutory city, we cannot do this. Some of the cities can, we cannot. So we're hoping we can approach that this year, or at least start the conversation. And finally, on this particular item is the protection of local zoning. Last year, there was a bill introduced that would have preempted most of local zoning and give it to the metropolitan council to zone. It was a very, very bad bill. You, as a community, you, as a community representative, should be able to determine what your community is going to look like now and in 30 years. I don't believe the state of Minnesota nor the metropolitan council should tell you what your community is going to look like. So we will look at that as well. I've talked about it in some of these, Dave may go over it later, but update on some of the water department. We're finishing the treatment plan, which stabilizes our system. And again, I talked about the possibility of future storage. We'll, we'll have to look at that. The sewer system, again, is stable. We're finishing the rebuild of the lift stations, the second half, where we did receive the $1.7 million. And there's always that possibility with headwaters 123, that we may have to move a metropolitan interceptor line. We'd hope to avoid that. We're doing some concepts that would show development, how they could be there without moving that, maybe put a street over it instead, because they'll never let us build a building over the top of that interceptor line. So the possibility of that may come. It's, we just don't know if, if that'll happen or not this year, but it's always something we should keep in our minds, and we're keeping in our mind. Our stormwater system's functional. We did a study for downtown to understand what we needed to do for stormwater to meet and encourage future development. We are drafting some plans that will address that and will bring it back to the council. That's basically building some structures in other places of the city that will allow us to have credit for stormwater and not cost them developers a lot more money like they did with Lighthouse Loss, where they had to put major stormwater facilities. Hopefully, this will make it easier for us to approve and for the, the clear the water authority to approve some of these things, so. And then I mentioned the JD4 study with the regional stormwater pond and the legislature request. The senior center, we recall a year ago or let more, our senior citizen director left and left the senior center in alerts. We had nobody, they had nobody to replace her. They tried to hire people, nobody, they could find nobody to hire. So the city assumed the responsibility for the operation. It is a city-owned building. The senior director has done an outstanding job. We are at a record high membership. It's almost fully programmed. There's something going on there most of the days. We don't do Fridays, but you know, they're going out to the casino or to dinner theaters and card, cards, and it's, it's an amazing turnaround. And we've found that the space there, when it's not in use, has become a very popular space for the community to rent for small events, whether it's for christenings or birthday parties or, or things like that. So that's a real good thing. Broadband expansion, we came to last year asking to, the council to approve a support, a grant application to the state and to the county, and with a contribution of $50,000 from the city to extend broadband to the areas that we don't have it now. That's mostly in the south part of the city. Those grants were approved. MidCon is planning for that. And so with, we've used to, we had, we have a lot of people who are very happy and hopefully, we won't have the complaints that we've had. I can't get broadband or it's slow or things like that. And hopefully, that will take care of a, a big portion, if not all of it. I would say probably not all of it, but a large portion of some of the complaints. So there'll be, I don't know what the timetable is, but new fiber will be coming in and so forth. And everybody will have access to high-speed capacity, which we found as during the pandemic, that is pretty much a necessity in, in our day. So, similar to what the telephone was for us older people. Labor contracts, fortunately, we have just gotten completed last, last fall, last December. You approved the police patrol and the police sergeant's contract. That contract, both of those contracts go through the end of December of 2025, so we have a three-year period there, which is great. The public works and AFSMI, the clerical, and the professional employees' contracts all run through December of 2024. So we have another year of peaceful and quiet labor relations. Each of the five contracts were fair for both sides, cordial, and I think we did a real good job. I think the unions did a real nice job in getting that put to bed without a lot of hemming and hawing, but still being fair to not only our employees, but to the city and their taxpayers, so. That's what I have. I'm going to turn my seat over to Kevin. He will talk to you about the finance department.
Excellent.
All right, thank you, Patrick. Mayor and city councils, I'll be going over the finance department. If you have any questions along, along the way, feel free to stop me. And then if you have any at the end, I'd be happy to take those as well. So we begin with looking at the finance department's structure. This has changed most significantly over the last few years. As Patrick mentioned before, the finance director was contracted out from, I believe, about 2015 to 2019, so for about four years. So prior to that, you had a, there was a finance director here about one day a week. And then the three staff that you see at the bottom, payroll, accounts payable and utility billing. And then, as Patrick also mentioned, in 2021, the accounting manager position was approved to be hired. And that's where Kim Carlson came along and now is the accounting manager. She's sitting right behind me here. So now this is where the department's structure is currently. The finance director's at the top, who oversees the accounting manager. And then the accounting manager is really the key piece in overseeing the operation, daily operations of, of the city. So manages the payroll staff, accounts payable staff, and then also utility billing and reporting to me on any issues that are going on, concerns them, while maintaining the policies and procedures in place as set by Patrick and myself. I believe this structure has really set this department up for success from where we've had some challenges, as I'll get into later, where we've been able to make some bigger strides, being structured, having that accounting manager position, in my opinion, has been a key proponent of where we're at currently as being able to manage those operations and then those higher-level duties, budget, tenure plans, debt management type things fall onto my plate, have been able to focus, have been able to kind of split those focuses rather than the finance director, for example, having to manage both of those duties. So with that, just wanted to go over some of the details of the finance director. And the next slide will be the accounting manager, as it is a fairly new structure. And just want to make sure, define on what we're doing on a day-to-day basis or kind of a high level. So finance director, policy and procedure and direction of the department, while looking at segregation of duties. And when I say segregation of duties, when you look at finance, it's very important that we're segregating different duties as far as paying bills, who's reviewing them, who's reconciling the bank account, who has access to the bank. It really provides those assurances to administration and the city council that all the safeguards are in place as it can be to be fiscally responsible with the city's funds. Finance director also oversees all the investments of the city in accordance with the investment policy as approved by city council. This is a really important part of the day-to-day operations for myself. I'm constantly looking at the bank account and our investments accounts, looking at the cash flow of the city to make sure that not only are we investing our funds wisely and meeting an acceptable rate of return, but also making sure that the city is, has funds available to meet their current needs. This is something the city has not had in place, knowing what the cash flows are, what the cyclical kind of flows are in the city. I have started, I've been monitoring that daily, so in a year from now, I can see where there's maybe some ups and downs. You know, with the debt, where the debt payments come in, where there's a lot of contractors' payments, so we can have a better idea of how much liquid cash we need on hand. Another big one is the budget preparation and monitoring. This goes hand in hand with the 10-year plan, which is my next bullet point. The 10-year plan is really an important part of the city, the whole city budget process. Really, before that plan, I would say the city would be, was kind of operating blindly with what's out there. The city didn't know what big projects were out there and on the horizon and what we need to be doing now to be set us up for success in two years, three years and five years. Because if you wait for those year five, for example, the public works building comes up, well, we need a new building. Well, how much is it going to be, how, how are we going to pay for it? You can be left scrambling to know, know what those funds are coming from, know what the impact is to the community and any prob, potential tax level with that. So that's been a very important piece with getting that in place and the support of council supporting that, that plan. And then also looking, tying into that, is looking at the general ledger and maintaining accuracy, going in and looking at where departments are coding, certain expenditures, making sure they're hitting the right accounts, the right funds, making sure it's a general fund expenditure, or maybe it should be in water and sewer, and making sure that those things are getting coded to the correct funding sources, a key piece with that. And that goes hand in hand with looking at those balances and what the budgets are in those funds. Touched on briefly, briefly before, but this debt management, making sure that, understanding the city's debt when it's maturing, what those requirements are, maintaining proper levels in those funds, and then also a direction of the council, what the debt, I guess, how much debt the city's comfortable having, and making sure that we're managing those fluidly, where if we're issuing new debt and looking at not only issuing debt, but do we want to do 10 years or 15 years? And what the potential impact is on the levy and when it matures, and try to maybe line some of those things up, where if we issue it in 10 years, our plan is we might have to issue new debt in 10 years. So then you're just swapping a levy instead of having kind of some ups and downs. So trying to take a closer look at that and look at the plan and schedule that out is a, is a key piece. Another piece that falls in is the annual financial statement preparation, starting now, looking at all the year-end reconciling accounts and getting all what the auditors call work papers set up so they can come in and look at our cash balances, our accounts receivable revenues and make sure that everything is accurate and presented fairly. It's a big piece of what the finance director does myself. With that, that audit happens at the end of April annually, every year. My goal is to hopefully have that wrapped up a little bit sooner this year and then schedule that sooner, because the sooner we can move on from the previous year and start focusing in on the future, on the next year is, is a key piece for me. Also looking at the billbacks and escrow management as it falls in with community development, with all the developments and all the things that fall in that realm of the world to make sure that not only are we having timely bills sent out, but looking at the balances and making sure that what we are collecting is covering the costs of those development and developing a process around those. I know Abby will touch base on it a little bit later, and I'll touch base on it on a future site. This has been an area of need and challenge in our department. Patrick touched base on it too, but human resources kind of falls in the realm of himself, Dan, myself and Kim. It can be a challenge just with not having direct HR experience. HR does fall in the realm of finance regarding benefits management as it falls within the payroll. And we administer the health insurance, you know, disability insurance, whatever, all the benefits that the city offers. We do have a very good handle on that, and we did just go through a proposal and switch health insurance providers for 2023. So I feel we've made some great strides in that realm as far as providing better information to staff and better for, better benefits to, to staff as well. And then finally, but not least, is this oversight of the accounting manager, checking in, making sure that all the operations are going as, as they should be. If there's any issues and where I need to step in and, and help out with that to make sure that those are going, operating efficiently. All right, so next, the accounting manager, as I said, Kim is in charge of all the daily operations of the city, so making sure that, looking over payroll, accounts payable, accounts receivable and utility billing, just name the high level, want the staff that is supervised, making sure the staff are getting paid timely and accurately, making sure the bills are getting coded properly, working with vendors and making sure that the staff is paying the bills within their legal requirement of 35 days, and also working with our utility billing clerk to help with any issues that's going on with that. And I'll touch base a little bit later on, on there. So that falls within the management. So then she is a direct supervisor of those three staff. She is in charge of any performance reviews or issues with that, and I support her needs with that as things come up. Again, mentioned before, human resources, Kim manages, helps manage the benefit side of the world of HR, but also with the FMA requests, any disability requests and all the other kind of realms of HR with that. It is a shared service as we are sharing knowledge at this point to get the best answer that we need to, given it's different situations. Maintenance of the financial software and ensuring accuracy. This is key when reviewing payroll, reviewing utility billing, payables. It's really the first stop to make sure that those invoices and everything looks accurate as is the final review stage before it comes to city council for approval and coding. So that's a key piece. And then also does assist with doing that final review of payroll before it comes to the city administrator and myself for final approval of that. Kim has also been very helpful with looking at billbacks and escrows at this point, and that falls in within, within her realm of managing those activities going forward as well as any cash receiving and also the bank reconciliations. So next slide is some current challenges that the finance department has faced since I've been here just under a year. We've come to realize that the software, when switched order to BSNA at the end of 2020, was not fully being utilized. The staff was kind of stuck in this is how we've always done it, we're just going to do it that way, and didn't really explore what the software can do for us to make our life easier. A lot of things were tracked on Excel and paper, and that has proven very difficult to follow and/or find to see where some of those things are at. So a couple of things with that is the accounts payable system allows invoices to be electronically routed to departments for approval. That was never a That was never explored when it was set up, so that is now being utilized and routed for that rather than getting invoice printed off, writing it to paper, bringing it back. So there's some of things like that. The modules are able to, what else, they talk to each other a lot more than what they have been. We're able to refund directly out of utility billing and have a talk with accounts payable. If there's a refund due, like there's a closing, so an estimated utility bill was made, they overpaid, which is very common. So then there's a refund due. Those refunds are getting processed manually and removed manually from utility billing where you could just automatically push those out of the system and into accounts payable. So those are just a few examples of when we, when I say that the software is not being utilized. There's a lot of inefficiencies around how some of those processes were being done that Kim has been very instrumental in getting that taken care of. I think that goes back to when that software was set up, there wasn't enough oversight just from making sure all the avenues were explored. I think there's just some lack of direction, some that can just go back to when there's a contract to finance. When the finance director was contracted for a day, a lot of those inefficiencies in those four years where you had three staff with minimal oversight to just trying to get the work done, I think played into how some of that, that kind of carried over into the software. Big challenge has been bill backs and, and escrows. As I mentioned before, a lot of these were tracked on paper and invoices and not fully being utilized with a combination of project accounting properly being tracked in the building module. And it was kind of, it's been, it's very inconsistent. We would see that some of the escrows would be received in the buildings, but then the invoices would not be applied. So then when we would go to refund, the buildings are sold $5,000 escrow, but there are really expenses to quota extra that were tracked on paper. So there's just, there's been a lot of digging to ensure that the city is being accurate with these type of escrows and accounting to make sure that the city is getting their money that is due to them, but also making sure that we're fair to these developers that if there's a refund due when we're closing out these projects, that is accurate as well. So that, that's been a very hard, I guess, most challenging issue and time consuming from my perspective. We made a lot of great strides with that from where we were when I first started. Abby has been very instrumental with that process too and her knowledge. So I do feel that we are getting going in a good direction with these, but it is taking some time just to really, really dig out of that hole. Utility billing has also been one of the, has been a very big challenge. This was outsourced, I believe, about 10 years ago. And when it was outsourced, there was a utility billing clerk still here at the city and the management of the communication between what was being updated here and what was being updated with that contract vendor. There was a lot of inconsistencies that we've been finding. One of the main things is when you have a meter, a meter ID is assigned to every meter that's in every house in the city. If that meter ID is wrong and we're, the public works is driving around doing their meter reads, if that meter ID is wrong, it will ping back, but it won't be tied to any account. So we've run to instances where there's been accounts been using water, but they have not been billed. So Kim and staff have been going through those accounts and finding those errors. Again, just the software not being utilized, there's a lot of reports that are run and can be run that signal where possible issues are. And with following up this on those issues or being able to catch a lot of those and fix a lot of those problems. So Dave's team's been very instrumental with helping along with that, along with Kim and our utility billing clerk. I've been working very hard to get that, so I think Dave and his staff are working together to try to get this solved. Also a big key to that is having the proper PIDs assigned to these accounts. When we're looking at making sure that we have all the accounts set up properly, all the, all the properties within the city have a PID. We have found that not every property that has been assigned a PID on the county website is in our utility billing system. And that has gone back to some of the challenges that the city has with, some residents are on full water sewer storm. Some just have sewer as they have their own private well and some just have a surface water management fee, which is billed annually and that's where most of these have been getting our miss because they're not, they don't have a water, they don't have a meter installed, they don't have sewer, it's, it's just surface water that's being charged. So we've been working very diligently with that and matching, making sure our system is matching what the county has, making sure that all addresses in our system have a PID assigned and that is correct and cross referencing that with the county. So again, it has been a very big challenge with utility billing. We are making great strides in that, but just with every billing that comes up, we seem to be finding some more and more things that, that are coming up and that's just coming with experience. Having Kim here now over a year, our utility billing clerk just started in July, so just getting that experience and understanding, again, what the system can do for us and what reports are out there has been very instrumental in helping us dig out of that hole. And going all back to this, how all this ties in, is this a documentation piece? There was no documentation on how processes ran. It was a lot of, well, this is what I do, I don't know what happens after me type mentality. So going back to all the new finance staff that we've had is not only, well, this is your job and your main duties, training them on, well, this is what happens after and this is how your job maybe plays a role with the next person or how it works this ladder up to myself or community development, public works, please, how, how this all relates and how it all starts with you that really benefits the flow. So not just understanding what you do, understanding the whole flow from start to finish. And if you fit in at the beginning or the middle or the end, or maybe the whole thing, just making sure they understand that whole, the whole piece is very, very important when we, when we've been bringing on these new staff. On the last one that Patrick, I know Patrick mentions is a human resources knowledge. That is, is a, is a very big challenge for some of these issues that come out. They, you know, one would think that, for example, an FMLA case is the same as everyone, but they're really not. There's a lot of different nuances that come up with that and just having that knowledge and working through that is a challenge. So with that, there's been a lot of things that this department has accomplished, I would say, over about a year that I've been here. First off, the 10-year capital plan was implemented and looked at with the budget process. I think that's a very key piece is one thing to budget, but it's another thing to plan for the future. So I think that's a very important part for saying this city up for success when we look at, at the next two years, five years, 10 years down the road. Part of that, the next two bullet points, the rate analysis and the tax levy projections, looking at the rates of those funds and really showing what those increases in rates do and how that affects the fund and where a fund might look healthy now, maybe a dozen in three years if you keep going on this plan, so you need to adjust now. And we'll go over that again here at another workshop for how that plays in with that. And again, those are fluent, we plan one way, we analyze this. I'm usually in there quite a bit looking at how the funds are doing, what capital's been purchased, where we're coming in over, under budget with those purchases and updating that and looking at that quite often and for sure annually, bringing that back and updating. Where you might be going one way, where you think we're going to have to do this percent increase, this percent increase. Well, some things changed, some things shifted, maybe we don't have to do that increase anymore. We might need more, we might need less. It's not just, okay, here's a 10-year plan and you're done, it's a current fluid document. The automated accounts payable process has been very, was a very good thing to implement, has been very well receptive with departments and has improved our process flow with that. Just a, just a documentation that the finance department has now as well. I don't go in and pay bills, it's not part of what I do, but when I look at the documentation and review it from what our accounts payable clerk and Kim had documented, I can go, if I needed to, under extreme circumstances, go in and make sure that the city bills get paid. And that's what, that's what we strive for, that someone that doesn't do it on a daily basis can go in there and follow step by step to get to, to make a process work. And that's very helpful if someone ends up going out on FMLA or a long-term leave or they, you know, they leave for another job that someone can step in and help with that. And that goes into next bullet points is cross-training employees. That had, that has not been done here before, but just having that understanding that if the accounts payable, our accounts payable person leaves, that our utility billing staff knows the basics of accounts payable and is at least somewhat familiar with it and knows their process. She knows where the emails get sent to, she knows where things are filed and how things are organized. Like this, having that, that knowledge to step in is very important. Having a centralized fuel, fuel card was implemented this year. That has been, from what my understanding, a very good change. We used to have fuel cards at QuickTrip, at Holiday, at Monomar. So depending where employees were in the city, they were buying gas from different locations. So then we'd have to pay three bills, we'd have to reconcile three bills across multiple departments. Now with one card, those employees can go to any of those stations, but all the bills come through on one statement. So it's a lot better part to reconcile, a lot easier for them to use. And it's also going to really help in the future, I believe, with the fuel budget. Because right now we don't really have a good history of, well, how many gallons is public works using on a year, how many gallons is? So we can really try to key in on that. So I view that as a big benefit going forward. And this, there's been a lot of operating efficiencies when we look at payroll, accounts payable and utility billing. When we looked at payroll, there's a lot of unnecessary steps that were happening. For example, staff would submit vacation requests to their department head, the department head would approve it. They would approve their time card, but then the time off request was going to our payroll clerk to review and approve and make sure everything was coded right. So there's a lot of redundancies in our process that were eliminated that has really made that more efficient, but also I feel a lot more stronger control and review process as well. Worked also with the fire department, the fire department payroll was getting manually done on two sides. Working with Al and our payroll staff, we're able to determine, we're kind of doing the same things. Reformat the spreadsheet, if we just, you just enter it this way, it gets imported right into our system, which eliminates a lot of potential data entry errors and just time from having two people have to data enter as well. Accounts payable, a lot of key things there, there's a lot of duplicate vendors set up, meaning there might be three vendors in the system, for example, Bolton and Mink, just because the bills need to get sent to, a better one would be the state. We pay a lot of different bills to the state, one goes to this department, this department. So we had different vendors set up for the state just because it was going to a different address. So we would go look at activity for a state, well, was it this vendor, was it this vendor? So combining those and redefining that process. I mentioned the automated workflow, but then also key piece was W9s. The city's required to have W9s on file. When Kim got here and I got here, W9s, one were either not on file or they were old and outdated, so we worked very diligently this year to, one, either find them, get updated W9s and make sure that the process is that we do not pay vendors without that W9 on file. And this with utility billing, I mentioned before, there's been a lot of cleanup with the PIDs. That's been good, we've gotten that pretty much taken care of and this inactive account cleanup. There's a lot of inactive accounts going back many years that, meaning someone sold their property five, six years ago, someone else moved in. So now that account's inactive because there's a new homeowner, but there is either a credit balance or a balance due on something that, that was old. So going through those accounts and really cleaning up those accounts and making sure that that is accurate. Lastly, this goal or some goals that I have for myself and also the department, looking at the budget. This council, I believe, needs budget reporting, whether that's on a monthly or quarterly basis and what that looks like. I believe that's a topic for discussion that we will have for how that looks. With my experience that you, the first one usually probably wouldn't come out till maybe April or May, just depending on when we get that audit done. Just because some, we need to clean up some accruals and things that need to get into the previous year and make sure we have that clean data. Like I said though, I would like to get that moved up so that we can kind of push all this up and really kind of shoot to have like a first quarter budget report as the first one of the year going forward. Kind of looking at our budget for what we have now, we made a lot of great strides, I feel like in our process and how that looks. But just adding some things to that budget document, whether that's graphs, some charts, having department summary page of what they do, what some goals are, what things they've accomplished, just to provide some context to the numbers during the budget. Are some things that I look to be added for the 2024 budget. And then this kind of look at a brief two or three-page budget summary, what I call kind of a summary and brief, budget in brief, that can be published online, given the residents that instead of getting caught up in all the details and maybe a long document, there can be a good tool this to go to and say, hey, here's what your tax levy dollars are paying for, here's this new, here's what changed, here's some initiatives that we have to really make it more of a benefit to departments, the city council and also the citizens of Forest Lake. I'm looking at a, looking at the city fees, I look at the city is in need of a fee study. Really taking an in-depth look of the fees we are charging, what amounts we are charging and making sure that those are not only covering city costs, but in line with other communities and what the proper charges should be. Just to make sure that those are fair to the citizens. And this operating, as I mentioned before, there's been a lot of cleanup, there's a lot of things that we are still improving on and are working on currently and I only see that getting better this year, so this to continue that type of cleanup.
Thank you.
With that, I'll turn it over to Abby.
Thank you, Kevin, thank you council for giving us this time to give you a brief introduction to everything that's going on. So Forest Lake Community Development Department, it's relatively new in a way. It oversees planning, zoning, enforcement, economic development and park and recreation. So planning is kind of that long range, we're looking at comp plans, smaller area plans like our downtown plan, specific study plans like park and trail plans. Zoning is the implementation of those plans, it's the meat and potatoes of our day-to-day. That's the primary interactions with our property owners. It's the, how big, the where, the what type of use type of stuff. Enforcement is just pretty self-explanatory, but a lot of nuisance based stuff. Those property owner complaints, lawn grass, you never kind of know what those, those complaints are going to be. Economic development, I think all of you up here are pretty well attuned to what that is and park and recreation as well. Oh, this slide got put in the wrong spot, that was my introductory slide. The structures, so in addition to myself, we have a full-time planner who does most of the zoning administration. Some of the planning work as well, some of that kind of longer range planning will be a help in that. Park and Recreation Supervisor Jamie Lachey, who does most of all of kind of those internal operations, the programming, the planning for the kind of activation of our parks. Also in, will help kind of start looking at more event permitting review processes and administering those a little bit better. And then again, thank you to the council who has approved an administrative assistant position that we are currently, it's an internal posting right now, it should go up by the end of the week externally for that position. So this will, just as, for those of you that are new on the council, in 2014, there was a reorganization of the city, many departments were affected. Community development went from having a development director, a planner and an administrative assistant down to a single planner. So having the administrative assistant this year now brings us back to our 2013, so 10-year ago staffing level. So our budget this year, you've, you've approved about a $420,000 budget. It is an increase from 2022, most of that is for staffing. The other increase really is for consulting services, both outside consulting and legal to really help us with the zoning code amendment. Even though it is a 39% increase from 2022, it's actually about 12% increase from what we actually spent in 2022 because so much of the time in 2022 was using consulting services, our planners, Bolton and Mink, Nathan and Branny, who was really helping just kind of keep the ship afloat before I got on and Ken got on. When adjusted for inflation, just so you know, we're still under where we should be adjusting. When adjusted for inflation, just so you know, we're still under where we should be adjusting that budget from 2013. It's just one of those things that we're just not kind of keeping the department on par with just where we should be. Economic development, I have $150,000 in that annually. That has not changed in the last year. And Parks and Recreation Programming, it's a slight increase from 2022. Operational issues, I mentioned that 2014 reorganization and without a community development director for eight years, the organization has really suffered. And I've mentioned this to the council in the past. At a time when we've reorg, we've redeveloped the organization, our population increased by 10%. Homes increased by 18%. Our resources were decreasing, but the workload was increasing. So there's a lot of text on this page, but really what I wanted to show you is the building permits that would have to be reviewed by planning and zoning. So that's looking for setbacks and impervious surface coverages and how tall a house can be or all those sorts of things. There was about a 48% increase in the last nine, eight, nine years. Zoning permits, we've had a 36% increase and complaints have just skyrocketed. I don't know necessarily during the pandemic years, communities saw a lot of complaints. People were home more, right? It's just one of those things. So I haven't really seen how that, what adjusts to 2022 necessarily, but overall, we are seeing a rise in complaints. People just have a higher standard, maybe now, especially as we have urban development coming in. People have a higher standard for what their neighborhoods, what their communities look like. Operational issues, I'm not going to lie, there are issues like technology, right? But a lot of our operational issues really stem from that just lack of organizational oversight. The development community has, we have a poor image. We have an image that we're not necessarily the most friendly to work with and the development community is kind of past the community bias. So one of the biggest operational issues that I face and my team faces is changing that image and really helping start to improve the development climate within the community. Not saying necessarily that we have to, you know, bend over backwards or change all our rules, but just being more accommodating and more friendly is something that is high on my list. And that's everything from just those pre-development planning interactions before, you know, that first step, that first phone call to the final inspection. That process is looked at and approved how we can. The next, and that is, and I kind of put organizational alignment and policy procedure analysis there, one right after another, but they're very much hand-in-hand. Reviewing all of the policies and procedures of planning and zoning, economic development, enforcement and how they're really relating to some of our organizational operations is very important right now. I note this as an issue, is there isn't any standardized processes in the planning and zoning. There was no how-tos, no, nothing written down. Bolton and Mink really held the ship up for us for a long time and that's been great. And now that development's kind of slowed a little bit, the building permit review's been slowed. We're taking some time to really write down what we're doing, how we're doing it, just to start that baseline. But there are a lot of things and the ways that we're working with our external partners, our consulting services, how we can close some of those gaps in some of our services. And then also just aligning some of our services, like a good example is just park functions. Half of them being in community development and half of them being in public works and how we're working better together to ensure that there's successful development, planning for and development of the systems. I know that Patrick and Kevin both touched on some of those process procedures, but escrows, property records management, just two really big things that need to be fixed in just working with all of these internal and external stakeholders. Again, then just leading that to that workflow standardization, that internal and external, how we're reviewing things internally, but also working with our external partners, that it's consistent every single time. So that internally, we know what to expect and we can guide our property owners, our applicants, our business through processes that are fairly consistent, efficient and predictable. And then lastly, just public relations and communications. I think you, this body knows that their communication, you've heard complaints. We've worked as a team on improving things like social media presence and website presence. But even so much as automation that we might be able to build into our technology systems so that an applicant might know if an application was received electronically. Some of that sort of stuff is areas that many cities have in place. We don't. It's just a small issue that we need to overcome. Future challenges, immediately, we need to just balance some of these operational issues while also then doing the job, right? So we're facing development pressure right now. We have been. And I think one way to offset that was to, you know, either make it harder or more challenging. Well, we need to be reviewing our operational policies, procedures, our standardizing our processes while also keeping the ship afloat. Creating those unified internal, external event review permitting processes. So we talk about activation in the downtown plan quite a bit, but we internally just don't have really good policies and procedures where we're working together and working with those event permit holders to ensure that it's meeting the public good. It's a good, successful event. But really, we all know how, what's going to happen, where it's going to happen, how it's going to happen, when it's going to happen, all that kind of stuff. We also need to retain some sort of engineering services dedicated to building permit review. We have a pretty significant gap right now in terms of after planning zoning or planning development may be approved and here's the new single-family home that's going to come in. There's just some challenges in ensuring that those new, the new construction is conforming with that development grading erosion control plan. And that is one area that we just, we've tried to do it internally. We've tried to utilize Bolton and Mink. Either way, the public isn't being well-served with those. So during the early part of this year, we'd like to, I would, you'll see from me and RFP for engineering services to see if we can find somebody that can help us do that very specific task for us. And then as Patrick mentioned, just developing and refining commission onboarding and policy development. My department is facing two nearly brand-new commissions, the Park and Recreation Commission and the EDA. And that onboarding of those volunteers to ensure that they have a successful service journey, that they're committed, that they work together. But do that in a way that is, you know, furthering community policy, furthering the city goals and also lawful. It's really important to me. And so helping get them on board, helping them help us define policy is going to be a really big thing for those two bodies in the next year. Short-term, kind of one to two years, address zoning administration and code enforcement gaps. And that is one, cleaning up the zoning code, but also how the department is really, how we're really working through some of the zoning code inquiries that we get and then also the code enforcement. The city planner's position right now in the summer, about 90% of their time is just answering, what is my setbacks? What zoning district am I in? Can I build an XYZ? And it's a lot of hand-holding property owners through processes and we need to be there for them. We can't just say, go figure it out. Here's your district. We need to find those ways to, if we can't be there, what are the programs, mechanisms, other resources we can employ? And then long-term, we do need to have an analysis of the operations, the operational structure of the building inspections division. It's a part of the fire department right now and just have that conversation if that is the best place or bringing it into community development is a appropriate action for the organization. Also, just alignment of parks, planning, development, maintenance programming. That is going to be an ongoing kind of evolution of that partnership between Dave's office and mine and the Park and Recreation Commission and what that really is going to look like in another three to five years. And then overall, just resource allocation. I mentioned to you that we now are staffed at our 2013 level, but we've grown. And so how my department is going to be able to keep up with just the current demand, but also the projected demand, because we are projected to grow. We are going to grow. And I hope that we can do that sustainably and that's my goal, to do it responsibly. But we will need to have conversations about resources to help with that. So some goals just in the next year, successful onboarding of the administrative assistant and training of the city planner. Ken has only been here just about 100 days, right around 100 days. He's still really new, still learning our code. It's a messy code. I don't really want him to learn the code. I'm not going to lie. I want to redo the code, but he's learning it. He's processed, you know, working through our processes and procedures. Updating all of our application forms, review of all the permitting procedures, process refinement, standardization and writing it down. Kevin had a really great point. He has staff out, bills need to go out. He's got to do them, right? I know how to issue a fence permit. We need to have it written down. It's just very simple little things like that. Securing those engineering services for building permit review. Review and update all EDA policy documents. That's really just our financial assistance policies as a whole. TIP is just one. There's also tax abatement. There's also, you know, business assistance. What does that mean for the city? What are the, why is one project more valuable or deserving of public assistance than another? We don't really have really great policies that define that. Creation of an events permitting and review process, something again, that's more standardized through the entire city system. Building on community partnerships, focusing on community events and recreation and then beginning the update of the zoning code. Relatively speaking, I think I ran through my department very quickly. If you have questions, I understand completely. But otherwise, you all know how to get ahold of me if you have any questions for me. Next up, we've got Al with Fire Department.
Thank you, Abby.
Mayor member of the council, talking about Fire Department. So to give a little bit of background, a lot of this is discussed with the Joint Fire Board, which is how we're organized. So a lot of this doesn't usually get back to the council, but Forest Lake Fire Department, we're a, we operate under a paid-on-call fire system. We have two stations, one in Forest Lake and then one in Columbus. It's a substation. The department is organized under a joint powers agreement between the city of Forest Lake and the city of Columbus. With that, each city has two members on the joint Fire Board to represent their interest under the contract. And so the function of the board is to make recommendations on operational budgets and capital purchases. In that setup, we share at a basically 80%, 20%. So costs are split between both cities based on valuation of market value and population. The current operating budget for Forest Lake for 2023 is $814,158. Under the joint powers agreement, that's roughly $651,000 to the city of Forest Lake and $162,000 to the city of Columbus. Since 2013, the average yearly budget increase for the Fire Department has been about 2.23%, with increases in payroll making up two-thirds of that increase over those years. Capital equipment is the biggest expense for the Fire Department. And over the last four years or five years since 2018, we've been working on replacing four apparatus. Engine three and tender one have been received by the city or delivered and are in service. And we're currently working on engine two and engine one, which are being built by Rosenbauer. Currently, if you order a fire truck today, you're looking at about 600 days for delivery. So it's a long build process and period. Calls for service. In, for 2021, Forest Lake responded on 482 calls for service and we've averaged 433 calls a year over the last 10 years. And fire alarms are our biggest calls for service. In 2021, we had 97. We averaged, or we had 149 medical responses in 2021, which is about 30% of all calls. And we've seen an increase in medical responses over the last three years. And we're working to look, we're working on trying to reduce that number of calls as an overall part of our average. So Fire Department challenges that we have, the biggest challenge that we have is retention recruitment. The Fire Department is authorized to go to 40 paid-on-call firefighters. Currently, we're at 32. 32 is kind of our, the number that we feel at this time provides us with enough firefighters to service the community for the type of calls that we receive. Retention recruitment's been an issue for paid-on-call fire departments all throughout the metro. And so Forest Lake, one of the things that we've looked at is firefighter pay and how that impacts the ability to retain firefighters. And we also look at the impact of if we're not doing the right things to retain firefighters, what could be the future cost to the city? And paid-on-call firefighting model versus a full-time model. If we move to that full-time model, we'd be looking at about $1.5 to $2 million a year in increased budgets. And the fund, the only funding source that we would have for that is taxes, basically. So as long as we can support the community and provide a response that supports the community, the paid-on-call model is what we're striving to continue to move forward with. Other challenges with recruitment and retention is when you bring on a new firefighter, in their first year, on average, it's about 300 hours of training in that first year. And so a new firefighter, not only do they typically have their full-time job 40 hours a week, but on top of that, they respond to fire calls during the weekend weekends. Typically do training for either fire, well, included would be firefighter one, EMR, active shooter, drivers training. That's all occurs in the first year. And then around 100 hours of additional training, which is department training. That all occurs in the first year. So being able to support somebody through that process and being able to retain them after that point has been a challenge. And we have lost a few members in that first-year process. But for the most part, Forest Lake's been pretty immune to the whole retention and recruitment issues. Not keeping up here on the slides. Okay, Fire Department goals. As Patrick and had mentioned earlier, we're looking at a safer grant to increase two full-time firefighter positions. Part of that would be to complete some projects that have been out there that we just have been unable to complete due to staffing challenges. Back in 2018, we went out and did fire pre-planning through the community. Basically, you're meeting with business owners. It's all commercial buildings and apartment buildings. And you're basically inside the building mapping fire doors, exits, chemical hazards, hazmat, storage, entrance and exit places, whether they have alarm systems, sprinkler systems, how they operate, verified rapid entry, key boxes, mapping them location-wise. And back in 2018, we did. And back in 2018, we had about sixty percent of Forest Lake was completed and about thirty percent in Columbus. But that's been five years now. So a lot of that, uh, businesses have changed. Definitely managers and contact information, that's changed. And so it's a, it's a, uh, task that's important and that we need to update. And so that would be one of the tasks that, uh, those two full-time firefighters, um, would work to complete. Establish a hydrant flow testing program. So annually, the Public Works, they go out and flush hydrants. Um, that is different than a hydrant flow testing program. Basically, your hydrant flow testing measures the amount of water that's available at a hydrant in a, in a water system, in case you have a structure fire. It typically takes two people to go through and do that measurement. And once you have that and it's, it's mapped out, when you have a big industrial fire, you can look on a map and determine where you wanna place resources to maximize the, uh, water out of a hydrant system. It also makes up about forty percent, or our water system makes up about forty percent of our ISO rating, uh, which is conducted every five years. In our last ISO rating, we dropped from a five to a four. But to get down to a three, which really will have an impact on, uh, commercial insurance, it's gonna take, uh, that hydrant flow testing program to be up and operational and, and, uh, have measurements. Cause it's, like I said, it makes up forty percent of the ISO rating. And the last one is establish a fire inspection program. We did have a program roughly ten years ago. Um, it was discontinued. The, uh, fire inspection program, it's, uh, not mutually exclusive of pre-planning. There is some overlapping of those. Uh, but a fire inspection program works to, uh, prevent fires, uh, and promote lights, life safety. Where a fire pre-planning is there to minimize property damage and firefighter safety. So, uh, with the fire inspection program, uh, that's more of an enforcement education, whereas pre-planning's more of education in the community. But we'd like to, to eventually get a fire inspector to go in and inspect some of these properties that haven't been inspected for a number of years. And business owners aren't intentionally trying to skirt fire code. A lot of it's just understanding and, and focusing them back onto requirements of, of fire code that they may just have never experienced, or they're busy running their business, and that's not their core function. So, um, you know, in the next few years, that's definitely a program that we would like to see, um, started again. So that's the Fire Department update. Uh, Building Department. So as Abby said, the Fire Department, um, the Building Department reports to the Fire Department. I have Corey Murphy, who's our building official here today, uh, in case you have any specific questions on the, uh, uh, Building Department. But Corey basically runs the data, day-to-day operations in the Building Department. We've got three fire, or three building inspectors. Uh, one's a full-time inspector out on the street every day. Uh, we've got one that's half inspections and then half plan review. And then the third building inspector doesn't work. It only works when we, uh, have ebb and flows of either, uh, a lot of inspections, uh, in a short period of time that, that is stretching inspection days. But we brought in MinSpect as a contract fire inspector, uh, about five years ago. And that has worked really well because when we've had times where we're starting to fall behind in inspections because of the volume, we're able to bring in a contract inspector for a few weeks to get us caught up. And it's really helped to reduce that overall cost in, uh, the Building Department by utilizing a contract inspector instead of hiring, uh, another building inspector. And then we have a fire tech who's kind of the, the face of the Building Department. Uh, the fire tech is a person that, that works with the consumer when they first come in and, and, uh, wanna get a building permit. And they work with the, uh, consumer to get all the required information that we need to process a building permit, uh, plan reviews and, and, uh, any required documentation. So, um, that's kind of our setup. Our budget in the Building Department's four hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two. Ninety-five percent of that budget is payroll. So it's, it's, uh, personnel-heavy, and the remaining, uh, twenty-five thousand is just for operational expenses. And in, over the last five years, we've seen about a four percent, or a five percent increase, um, in the Building Department budget, and that's mainly labor contracts. Thank you. And permit revenue has been in line, uh, with revenue protection, projections over that same period. The next slide shows, uh, permits and inspections for, uh, 2023. And, uh, it's interesting, cause in May, when we had our first, uh, rate increase, uh, it was like building put the brakes on. People just didn't know what was gonna happen with the economy and was it gonna slow down? And then we started seeing, uh, increases in lumber and, and construction cost and all that. Uh, took about two months, and then people kind of understood that this wasn't gonna kill us. And we started to see an increase in both inspections and permits. And then, uh, getting toward the end of the year, it always slows down. So, um, next year, it's gonna be interesting to see what the, uh, interest rates and, and, uh, whether the economy continues to put the brakes on, or if we're gonna be gangbusters again. Uh, as Abby had said, we had, uh, a lot of developments lined up, and that's all been pushed out. So, um, it's definitely economy-driven. Next slide shows a five-year history of building permits and inspection, or building inspections. As we can see in 2023, uh, brakes were put on when COVID happened. We slowed down considerably. Next year, in 2021, we started to pick up. And last year, um, with the economy, slowed down again. So, um, hopefully we can cross our fingers and hopefully the economy turns and we start, uh, back into building. Um, operational issues, Abby had kind of talked about it, covered the, the big ones, uh, with the gap that we have in, in grading and stormwater. Uh, and just, uh, code enforcement activities, building works a lot with that. And, uh, between those two items, it eats up a lot of Corey's time. Where it should be functioning on, on, uh, building activities. Uh, and I think that through that RFP for, uh, engineering, I think that's gonna help. And I think just the realignment and, um, restructuring for the code enforcement will, uh, help reduce that time, that building spending on, uh, both of those items. And I think that, you know, another thing that we've suffered in the Building Department over the last five years is we had a reputation of not being easy to work with. And I think that, uh, over the last five years and with, uh, addition of Corey in, in as our building official, uh, we've worked really hard to make it more customer-friendly and consumer-friendly and communication. And, and, uh, probably thirty to fifty percent of my day was spent on dealing with complaints five or six years ago. And, uh, just in the last couple of years, we've really seen that slide down. And in the last six months, uh, I've only had a couple of complaints. And so, uh, I think we're doing the right things, and I think we're, we're, uh, building a culture in that department where contractors are now happy to work with us again. And, and I get reporting back that we're a lot more friendly and open. And, um, you know, everything's not so black and white that it has been in the past. So I'm happy to report that back. Uh, I know it's been a challenge for us in the past, but I think we're, we're past that, but we can always do better. So, um, that's an operational issue that's been improving in the last, uh, five years. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Whoa, I've got one more. I'm not quite done yet. So our department goals, um, securing engineering services for building, uh, permit review and to help ensure new residential construction conforms to city standards and neighborhood plans. Update all Building Department application forms, review all permitting processes and process refinement for streamlined efficiency. And as Abby had talked, to Patrick had talked, developing the online permitting, uh, to make it easy access for our consumers, see a permits and understand where those permits are, um, in the process. That's all I have for the Building and Fire Department update unless there's questions.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll turn this over to Public Works, I believe, is next.
Dave's up.
Good evening. So I'm Dave Adams, Public Works Director. Uh, Public Works is basically, we build, operate, and maintain all the infrastructure within the city, pretty much all the infrastructure. The way I explain it to a lot of people is, most people are used to maintaining their property at their home. We just have a really big yard. So we just, we manage from streets to parks to pipes underground that nobody even sees. So we have a lot of stuff going on. Um, the Public Works Department is broken into, uh, seven separate departments, uh, streets, parks, fleet, surface water, sanitary, and water. I'll just briefly go through them. Uh, Streets Department, uh, maintains approximately a hundred and thirty, uh, miles of streets. Eleven miles of trails and twenty miles of sidewalks that are owned by the city within, within the city of Forest Lake. Uh, their main tasks, snow and ice control, pothole patching, ditch mowing, shouldering, grading, street sweeping, tree trimming, pavement markings like crosswalks and dash lines in the roads, uh, hauling compost from the compost site and, um, street sign repair, replace, all that, all that throughout the city. Uh, the Parks Department, uh, maintains, uh, city's twenty-three parks. Also mows along all the eleven miles of trails, uh, maintains the grass at the airport and all the other city-owned buildings throughout the city. Uh, main tasks for the Parks Department, snow and ice control, mowing, irrigation maintenance, trash pickup, tri, uh, playground maintenance, landscape maintenance, ice rink maintenance, fertilizer weed control, tree trimming, just to name a few. Fleet Department, uh, it's a department of one, but, um, that's responsible for, um, repairing and maintaining all of the, the city's public works equipment. Like I said in the, the PowerPoint, he does thousands of things, um, list a few things, snow and ice control. Also fabrication welding oil changes, you name it, he does it. The city is very lucky to have this mechanic here. Um, we outsource very little. Um, it's, when he finally says Uncle and gives up is when we'll send it somewhere. Uh, but he, he can hop on a cat loader and fix a hydraulic line and then jump on a lawnmower and fix a carburetor and then go and go on a plow truck and figure out diagnostics why a check engine line is on. So it's, he can do everything and saves the city thousands upon thousands of dollars every year. Uh, Surface Water Department, um, that maintains, uh, the hundred and ninety-eight ponds, we have eighteen hundred catch basins and forty-five miles of storm pipes that are underground. Main task for that is, again, snow and ice control, pond maintenance, cover cleaning, repair, replacement, uh, storm pipe, televising, jetting, utility locating, uh, ditch maintenance, and MS four compliance. Uh, Sanitary, uh, Sewer Department, uh, we have forty-six lift stations in the city, uh, hundred and six miles of sanitary pipe and over two thousand sanitary manholes that all need to maintain. Um, their main tasks, just to name a few, just like before, snow and ice control and maintenance of the lift stations, um, and sanitary lines, utili, utility locating, to name a few. Uh, the Water Department, uh, they operate and maintain three water plants, soon to be four, uh, two water towers, seventy-five mi, miles of water mains, fifteen hundred valves, and over eight hundred fire hydrants throughout the city. Uh, listed a few of their main tasks of, of how you maintain the water system. And I don't know if you got the weekly report this, uh, week. It has, uh, hours of distribution, or distribution of hours for 2022. It kind of lists out, uh, probably broken down into about a hundred and seventy different job activities. And, uh, we track that throughout the year, and you, it should be in that weekly report. You can kind of see how all those hours get distributed around, around what we do on a daily basis. Uh, as far as staffing goes, um, there's sixteen full-time employees. Uh, as I listed before, every full-time employee is involved in, uh, snow and ice control. Um, they're spread over departments below. I noticed earlier I did my math wrong. It's, should be five with streets, then, uh, the rest is correct. Uh, we also utilize part-time employees throughout the year. Summer seasonal staff, we have it fourteen, uh, two people that run the weed harvester, a compost attendant, um, have a operator come in and clear, uh, sidewalks and trails in the winter. And some of the summer seasonals come back in the winter to do ice rink maintenance while they're on their holiday break. As Patrick mentioned before, earlier, we're kind of scattered throughout the city. Uh, we have, uh, about seven different buildings that we, we work out of. We have our north, our main public workshop that has two buildings. Our warming house serves as our sign shop. Uh, Water Plant One has garage and office space. The old Township Building, the Silk Building is shared with M Health, so we have a couple, uh, stalls there. The pole building, some cold storage. And, uh, we also have a couple hangars at Hangery at the airport to store equipment. Like I said, we've, we've gotten very creative how to operate a lot of this many locations. Um, but sometimes it's quite difficult to remember where you put that thing. I know we have it, but where is it? So, uh, it's, it's a challenge. Just that some days it takes a couple hours just to get what you need to go and do what you need to do. You know, you try to keep the stuff you're gonna ye, need all the time at the shop, in our main shop, but you can't keep everything there, just the size we have now. Uh, budget, um, I just listed a bunch of stuff on this PowerPoint as the budget. Just a lot of the general fund is, you know, your streets, parks, and fleet department, and compost site. And, um, then enterprise funds with, uh, sanitary sewer and water, and then the fee-based surface water. Just kind of listed what their annual budgets are. And then, uh, capital equipment for 2023 is approximately two point one million. A bunch of that's gonna get slid to 2024 because of the plow trucks, but, um, and then about seven point five million dollars in capital improvement, which is the water plants and the lift station projects that we're currently doing and, and including the street project for 2023 as well. Uh, department challenges, uh, like, like you heard from everybody else, it's, it's funding, staffing, and, and for us, it's expectation of services. It kind of, kind of, they all go hand-to-hand. If you don't have the staff or the funding or, or the equipment to do it, it's hard to do it. And we run super lean. If you saw, we have sixteen full-time employees, we have sixteen plow routes. So if, like today, if one person's on vacation and another person's at training, I al, I jump in a plow truck and I'm, and I'm plowing with them, but we're still down a route too, which is, ends up everyone having to pick up another route when they're all done with their route. So it's, we run as lean as possible and, and just minor, minor tweaks can really give us a challenge. So. So that's why, you know, changes always need to be discussed, and hopefully we can do stuff with the budget and make those decisions as we go, because it's really difficult for us to do something very massive at, you know, at a moment's notice. We're all willing to do it, but sometimes we just are hampered by what we have and who we have. Goals, goals and needs, you know, we just continued support from the city council. I usually don't come and ask you for a plow truck if I don't need it. I don't come and ask you for a staff member if I don't need it. So usually when I'm coming to you and saying we have an issue, it's because we have an issue. So that's basically what we're looking for, support for staffing and funding, and also, you know, working together to figure out how we're going to solve the road problem and how we're going to, you know, keep enough water for residents and make sure we have enough lift stations and enough of everything we do. So, you know, our goal is, our real goal for Public Works is that we just don't want to exist. You know, we want somebody to turn the water on with, and their faucet on without realizing why that happened or flush the toilet, and then it goes away and wake up in the morning and the roads are plowed, and go to Lakeside Park for summer Tuesdays in the grasses mode. I mean, that's, we just want that all to happen, and we try our best to make that happen, but, you know, that's, that's our goal for Public Works, and, you know, just continued support from council is what we look for. That's it. Short and sweet from me.
Excellent. Thanks, Dave. Chief Peterson.
All right, the Forest Lake Police Department. I am Rick Peterson, the Chief of Police. Our mission statement, our organization is dedicated to providing a safe and inviting environment through community partnerships and crime prevention. We will strive to deliver superior services, and it's still the highest quality of life within our community. To give you a brief overview, the 2023 approved budget, operating budget for the police department is $4.9 million, and this is not on the slide, just so you know. The 4.25 million is wages and benefits, and $650,000 is all other expenses, which would be equipment purchases, operating, could be for repair and maintenance of vehicles, and so on and so forth. Every year, we take in approximately over $600,000 in different fundings, grant, funding, agreements, and police state aid. What does that budget give you? The Forest Lake Police Department chain of command is, consists of Chief of Police, which is myself. The captain reports to me. There is five sergeants. One is assigned as a detective sergeant, four as patrol sergeants, and then the police officers and police administrative assistants all report to them. I'll break it down a little bit here. Chief of Police, Captain, four patrol sergeants, a detective sergeant. There are two general detectives, one narcotics detective that is assigned to the Washington County Narcotics Task Force, three school resource officers, 14 patrol officers, where there is one vacancy at this time, two police administrative assistants, and then one evidence technician and community engagement coordinator with an approved full-time employees of 30. The job duties and responsibilities of the Chief of Police is overseeing the police budget, all police staffing, final approval of general orders and policies within the police department, department equipment and vehicle purchases. I am the final approval of those. Police Department contracts and agreements, this would be like school resource officer agreements and other contracts with Washington County or other law enforcement agencies. I oversee the grant programs and report to the city administrator. I'm also involved in other numerous community organizations as well. The captain, the captain reports directly to me, and the captain is the second-in-command in the police department. So when I am gone or something happens where I'm not available, he is the one that will be overseeing all the operations of the police department. He supervises the five sergeants. He is also, along with Fire Chief Newman, city emergency manager. So of course, we saw a lot of both Captain Greg Weiss and Fire Chief Al Newman during COVID. He oversees all the off-duty work assignments. He oversees all the city's major events and is our internal affairs supervisor, along with some other duties or responsibilities that are listed there. The four sergeants, there are four sergeants that supervise the patrol division. We attempt to have 24/7 coverage as much as possible when it comes to supervision, so they are scattered in different rotations and shifts. Currently this year, we have one sergeant who is assigned to the detective division. The sergeants supervise and oversee the school resource officer division, administrative assistance. They also oversee the patrol fleet, equipment, field training program, and are the direct supervisors of the SWAT and training program. Police officers, we have 14 assigned to the patrol division, three assigned to the detective division, three school resource officers, and then they are assigned other special assignments, which might be SWAT as training instructors, as I mentioned, the Washington County Narcotics Task Force, bike patrol program, and drug awareness, which is also known as the DARE program. Our police evidence technician and community engagement coordinator oversees just that. The property evidence room oversees the body worn cameras and in-car cameras, video redaction and such, and then also all community events. And police administrative assistants, they're more or less the first contact with the public when it comes to walk-ins, phone calls, emails, and such. They oversee the records management system and records and reports redaction. They also do all the fingerprinting when people need to get fingerprinted in Forest Lake. Calls for service, we historically, actually over the last five years, I've got three listed here, respond anywhere from about 16,000 to 17,000 calls for service. During COVID, those numbers seem to have dropped a little bit. Now we're seeing them drop again. There's a lot of different factors for that. You know, it could be good things, like there's less traffic, crashes, there's less medicals, you know, those types of things. But it does just fluctuate. You just never know each year, but it does average around 16,000 to 17,000 calls for service. Some 2023 goals that we have, I, it's, when I became chief, it was really important for me to continue the legacy of Chief Jim Trudeau, Dave Schwartz, and Clark Queen, and that was with community engagement and community policing initiative. And I really tried to step it up a notch, and I really think that's important, to have that partnership with our community, the public, and businesses. So that's definitely always going to be my number one goal. Monitor and improve department operations and efficiencies where needed, always doing that every year, every month, every year, we're looking at that and trying to improve those operations and efficiencies. This is a big one, which is really new the last couple of years, and it's monitor and review, mental health, mental illness, and person and crisis calls. I've mentioned this over the last couple of years. Those numbers have really skyrocketed, and we're trying to figure out a way to work with the county, the state, on how we can work as a partnership in attempting to deal with these calls for service. They're really, really time-consuming, and unfortunately, it's almost like a revolving door, you know, that's, it's, it seems like we're dealing with the same individuals, unfortunately, and it's time-consuming, and it takes us away from doing other traffic enforcement and other calls for service. I feel like we could be utilizing our education experience and talents in. Continue training our personnel at a high level. Once again, that's been a goal over the years, and I really push for that. I want to make sure that we have all the training necessary for our personnel. And then staying ahead of technology needs. I feel like we've done a really good job of that, and I do want to thank the city council, because you've always supported us in that area, and I appreciate that. Current operational issues, once again, just like fire, police recruitment and retention. I think all of us in this room have heard that over and over again in regards to law enforcement over the last few years. Just to give you an example, in 2000, when I was hired, there were 300 applicants for one position open in Forest Lake Police Department, and in 2020, '21, and '22, we've had, each year, we've had about 25 applicants for anywhere from one, two, or three position openings. And it's not just Forest Lake, it's everywhere. One of the issues that we're seeing is just the, unfortunately, the law enforcement agencies almost, you know, fighting with each other to get the best quality applicants. And some of these are, whether it be higher wages or bonuses, work schedules. What I had put in here just recently, just because over the last few weeks I've heard of it, that officers are being promised that if we, if you apply here and you get hired, we'll ensure that you're working days from day one. I mean, that's unheard of. Or that they're assigned to a detective division, or you're going to be our new K-9 officer. That's, it's just crazy, but that's just the environment that we're in today. Keeping up with public safety policy and training requirements, that's a really big one over the last few years for a lot of different reasons. The Minnesota Post Board and state statutory guidelines, they're really putting a lot of pressure on cities and law enforcement agencies to pump up their training and other things, and that's difficult, because you need to keep up with that. We have kept up with it, but I know it's a, it's an issue with other agencies, and I just want to make sure we don't fall behind on that. And then technology advancements in law enforcement, you know, back, prior to me becoming chief, it was a huge thing, having what we call an in-car camera. Well, now every police squad has that, and that was a huge controversy for law enforcement agencies. And then, as we all know, then it was body worn cameras, and there's drones, and there's so many other things out there. We just don't know what that next technology advancement is going to be, but trying to keep up with those. Some challenges, immediate and short term, I'll jump down and say the recruitment and retention, which I've already mentioned, succession planning, that is something that we really need to work on. I've talked about it over the last few years. Some of us are getting to that retirement age. Suddenly, that became, that was thrown in the backseat because we had COVID and so many other things that happened the last few years, and now it's really, it's a reality. There's four of six of us in the command staff that in the next two, three, two to three years have the potential to retire, and that's over 120 years of experience. So that's going to be a huge challenge, but I'm up to the challenge, and I want to make sure that we're sitting well the day that I end up retiring. Police personnel, another huge challenge. As we've all heard in the news, mental health with police officers is a number one priority. You know, we've all heard it with the military, with PTSD and things like that. Well, it's finally come to the forefront that people are realizing that police officers, they're paramilitary. They see a lot of the same things that frontline military see. And I do want to thank the city council. You approved some services for our police officers and resources going forward in 2023, so we can get them any help they might need. Vehicle and equipment costs are rising. That's a huge one. We talked about it during the budget discussions. A 30% increase in police cars and equipment. It goes right down the line. And then, once again, the mental health and substance use disorder, call response. Long-term, once again, I think it's going to be a, when I say long-term, I think this is going to be a three to five year, it could be a 10 to 15 year when it comes to recruitment and retention. Once again, the police personnel and mental health, staying current with staffing needs as the city's population increases. And then, once again, the costs rising with vehicle equipment. So as I mentioned, community engagement and community policing has always been a huge initiative of mine, and I really think it's the face of the Forest Lake Police Department. And I want to continue with that initiative. And over the past 10 years, we've participated in just a lot of community engagement, and I listed some there, Special Olympics, Forest Lake Most Program, Safety Camp, Shop of the Cop, Coffee with the Cop, Night to Night, the School District Mock Car Crash, and there's many others. And I just have a few pictures here of Tip of Cop, the Most Forest Lake, the Mock Car Crash at the Forest Lake Area High School, Shop of the Cop that we just held last month, Forest Lake Area Safety Camp, and Night to Night. That's all I have for you.
Thank you, Chief.
That is all the presentations we have as far as department head. I would like to just say a couple more things, is that while you heard a lot of doom and gloom here and things that we may have not done the best, I think the city with their department heads, every one of them, I think you're in a great position to move forward. All of them have the right attitude and the willingness to improve things, and I think that's a real positive step. I think that's probably the best group of department heads you've had since probably when they lost some of the department heads. So I think we're on a positive note. I think we're all going in the right direction. So I do want to thank all the department heads for their work and for their attitude to look at and improving and how we can change things and make the citizens' experience better. So if you have questions on any of the presentations, we will be happy to answer any of those.
Thank you for that. Also, just thanks for the transparency. It's, it'd be easy to just sit and blow sunshine at us, and everything's perfect, and everything's great, and we don't need anything, and that's, we're not in that spot where we need, I mean, those messages are always great to hear, but we need to hear what's happening, and so I just really appreciate the transparency. Maybe just, just round robin of council questions. There's a lot of information presented tonight. Tonight was intended to just kind of set the stage for what's upcoming for 2023. But if, you know, if there are specific questions, or headlines, or banner items, or additional information that would be helpful, maybe if we just want to do a quick round of council feedback, does anyone have any follow-up items or things that you would like?
Yeah, sure.
Nothing specific, just the one question on the online for the building permits. A 12-month seems like a kind of a long time. That's what we're predicting by the end of the year. Is there a certain reason, just getting up to speed on that technology?
It's, we've had the technology. When it was implemented, it was not implemented for online. The software allows that. It's just going to... online. The software allows that. It's just going to actually take a redeployment of that software. So we're going to actually, actually go in and, and almost from scratch a little bit to restart that process. So it'll take a while for us to map our processes and then gap those processes and make so they make them streamlined and ready to go. It'll, it'll take a while. Plus, what you have to understand is the building department gets real busy in the summer, so we need their assistance as well. So we're aiming for November 1st, but maybe earlier, maybe a month later. But it's really a redeployment of our current software. It has to be restructured so it works online.
And are Sam, any?
Well, I just, I would just have a comment as well. This has been really helpful for all of us, I'm sure, especially the public, you know, because they can get a chance to hear what's going on and what's, they can kind of digest this whole thing. And the whole, you know, we're all about being as transparent as we possibly can with everything. And, and I know that as far as the building department is concerned, there's been some improvements there. And Al and I have talked about that, Cory and I have talked about it quite a bit. And so it's just one section there. I think I've even mentioned a couple comments with Abby. And all these folks have been really helpful in trying to get this thing figured out and fixed. So, and Dave, he has his own issues with people. And, and one thing about Dave and his, in, in his department, I mean, these folks are out in the public every day, you know? They're the ones that are exposed to the public. The office folks, I mean, yeah, you're there, but it isn't like one day it's like a showing out there with a plow truck or a, or a lawnmower or whatever the case may be. So, and of course, same thing with the police department. They, you know, they're out in the public every day and, and doing their thing. And so, one of the comments said, there was a house fire not too long ago. Doesn't matter, it was, but it showed up on Facebook that there was a complaint in it that said, it took the fire department eight to 12 minutes, eight to 12 minutes to get to this fire. And I'm thinking, boy, would I like to talk to this person. You know what I mean? For somebody to get out of bed at four o'clock in the morning, drive to the fire station, grab the fire truck or whatever they're grabbing, and get to the job in eight minutes? Give me a break. So anyways, those are unbelievable statistics and just some things that, I don't know where, where some of these comments come from. But anyways, thanks to all the department heads and we'll do our best to work with you, for sure.
I'll just make a comment. I don't have any questions. I'm still absorbing all of that information. And it was fantastic and just echoing what Sam said. It was great hearing all that, the, the positives, the negatives, and similar to what Sam ended there with is just that we want to support you and we're here for you. And thanks for being here for us too. And you guys are the ones that are in the trenches doing the work. And without you, we couldn't be up here and we appreciate it.
Very well stated. I have a couple tactics after, certainly echo the comments that have been made really well before me. As I just listened to some of the holes and some of the things that are coming, upcoming needs specifically around starting to build the park plan, integrating the park master plan into our tenure plan. Streets is an ongoing kind of a punch list of items that has impact onto the tenure plan. And then also just where we are with the EDA and what we're going to do with, you know, kind of activating the downtown plan. So as I just think about those gaps and trying to move the ball forward and always trying to find the right balance with where we are with our tax levies and how, what are the fees that we're charging, I, I wonder if it'd be smart to start or kind of revisit some of our benchmark studies. There was a time, three, four years ago, where periodically we would look at 10 benchmark cities and review kind of per capita spend on parks, per capita spend on streets, per capita spend on things like EDA. And I wonder if it would be helpful to have some of that information in our back pocket because there's a lot of gaps to fill. And it would just be helpful to know where are we behind or where are we in comparison to other communities? Because I think that's naturally what our residents compare, you know, they're, they're comparing my, you know, Forest Lake tax rate went up by 7%. It went up by 15% in North Branch or whatever. Like that's, that's the comparison. And I think it'd be helpful to us, just help us to inform what are some of the other sources of revenue and how are other cities either doing it or not doing it? We might find that we're just in really good company and this is a challenge all over. But I think there's also pockets where we will find that, well, of course, we're in this place because we have historically not had the same level of spend in the area of particular parks comes to mind that some other communities have. I mean, it's just helps us to tell the story and to really benchmark to the community. So I don't know, just having that information sooner rather than later. If we're going to go out, it might be helpful to just have it, you know, kind of a holistic data set that helps to inform. I don't know. Just a thought, if it's, again, helping to kind of figure out our pace and figure out, you know, kind of that message as we're rolling into budget season and what it, what do things look like for the 2023, well, 2024 budget, I guess. Otherwise, one other just item I noted, it'd be helpful to have another review of the tenure plan. I know we did an initial presentation to council, I think probably end of, end of third quarter, beginning of fourth quarter as part of the budget season. Be helpful to just revisit that again. And even if it is just to give us the 10-minute version in a workshop, just so we all have it in our back pockets. And then also, we should do another street update of, and I don't mean to create work of new material, but just to recirculate the map of all of the planned street projects and just how those are lined up or not lined up. And that's always just a good, just revisit of, oh yeah, that section of North Shore isn't scheduled until 10 years from now or whatever that plan is. That's just helpful to kind of inform again, just eats up a large chunk, chunk of budget. So, and then also maybe we should have a conversation about weed harvest this year. I know it's really small, but I, I know there's a time to have that conversation and maybe that's now before we get too close to season. So there's my random list. Any other randoms that come up?
If I could just add, obviously I'm new to this, so this was very informational. I appreciate everyone's time and the effort everyone put in to put these presentations together. You know, as far as, I've heard a lot of great things with the building. Cory got a lot of good things about you coming in and of course Abby, just countless since I've been elected, since the election and, and getting sworn in. Dave, your, your position's thankless, especially this time of year with the plowing. Everyone has an opinion on how that is. So a suggestion there would be to try to educate maybe the public about the policy because I think if they understood that and the fact that if there was a policy change where it was to go to clear pavement or however that's worded, that it would be an increase in, in the, in your taxes, they might be a little bit more okay with the situation, especially with all the snow we've had this year. It's just, it's been tough. And so the, the police and fire, crown jewel of this city, that's the way it's been for years. And the longevity is, is great and having two local guys heading up those departments. Rick, the thought of you guys leaving and Greg, is there an exit strategy as far as internally? Is there any talk about that? Or do you see options, any people that you have under you that would be good in taking those roles?
Yeah, we've, we have discussed it throughout the command staff and, and other officers who I think are rising through the ranks. And so it hasn't been ignored by any means, but it's one of those things that just kind of sneak up on you, you know? But yes, I personally feel like we do have some really good internal candidates.
And then finance, it's good to, you know, Kevin, your addition here and him, it's, no one really talks about finance to the, you know, the public side of things, but knowing that we have good people in place is, is huge. So, thank you.
Excellent. Well, great session. Look forward to seeing everybody on Monday evening. That's kind of the end of our planned agenda this evening, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion. Is there a second? Second, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye and oppose, and we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.